I do want to remind you that this afternoon, the only item that we'll be voting on is the approval of our agenda. This is our workshop meeting. All of the items that we'll be discussing this evening will be voted upon in future meetings. So tonight is the workshop where we go through and hear reports and get information so that we can make informed decisions when we do vote on these items. We've got several things on the agenda that I'm excited about tonight, including an update on our tourism and film industry from our folks at the Tifton-Tifton County Tourism Association with Spearman Agency. And several things, if there's anyone who'd like to grab an agenda, they are on the podium back here so you can follow along with everything that's going on. We'd also like to recognize Kayra Fowler being here in W A O B. It's glad, we're glad to have both of y'all with us this evening, so thank you for that. And that being said, we will get everything rolling. We've got a full agenda and lots to go over. So gentlemen, you've all received the agenda. Jessica does a good job of getting that out to us in a timely manner in the council packet. So I'll take a motion concerning the agenda.
No move.
Thank you. As I said, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If any, this is approved. Okay, I'm gonna call on our friends from the Tourism Association. So Angela, we'll turn it over to you. There's been, unless you've been hiding under a rock somewhere, you've heard about all of the wonderful things that are happening in our town with regard to the film industry and the movie industry. Our folks at the Tourism Association do such an incredible job from maybe in Tifton, not only across our state, but all across our region. And Angela, you serve, you have a position in our state association, is that correct?
I serve as the secretary for our regional association.
Okay.
It was, used to be Plantation Trace, which is maybe what you've seen in magazines and such. We, with over the last year, have changed that name to Scenic Southwest Georgia. Just to be a little more representative of our region, people didn't know what Plantation Trace meant. So at least when you hear Scenic Southwest Georgia, one, you know where we're located, and two, you know, it's just a little more inviting to come and see what we have to offer. But I serve as a secretary, but I've also served as president of the association.
Okay, okay. So you are always from maybe in Tifton, and we appreciate that. So we'll turn the floor over to you for the presentation.
Thank you. I don't wanna take up a lot of your time, we just wanted to do a, excuse me, a quick overview of tourism, kinda where we're at right now, as well as look at filming and what that has to do for tourism, as well as economic development. So real quick, just, I wanna show you a, just a snapshot of kind of our big things when you think of tourism. We have sixteen hotels currently, and that totals over twelve hundred rooms. You know, there is the possibility open the air of two to three, or one to two more hotels being added in two or three years. You know, we're not sure about that, but if they come onboard, we're ready. And I just wanted to make one quick note. We do have some information kiosks in several of the hotels, those that have requested them. And we have to fill those almost weekly. We put brochures, if someone were to ask coupons or brochure cards, or we put various magazines that we have in the office, not only about Tifton, but about the region and the state. So it's nice to see that we have to fill those up quite often, especially now, to show that we do have traffic coming into our hotels. Next, just a quick look at our dining. There's over one hundred restaurants in the county, and over forty of those are local to Tifton. And as tourism, we do as much as we can to push people to those local restaurants. If they call and ask for suggestions on, you know, they're here with some business colleagues, where should we go? Or if there's a group in town, where should we go? Anytime somebody asks, we try as much as we can to push them to a local restaurant as long as they can accommodate them. So we're excited about that, and I think that's gonna continue to grow. Just a couple of our major attractions here. Everybody knows about the Georgia Museum of Agriculture. That's probably what we consider our biggest attraction. Downtown Tifton is becoming a destination of its own. You know, they have shopping.
They're gonna, soon we'll have things to play, you know, with the axe throwing and the pottery thing. So definitely plenty of places to eat as well. So we try to push people away from the I-75 corridor downtown. And then we also have two you-pick farms, which is Berry Good and Rutland Farms. And a lot of people, I think, we forget that we have those because, you know, they've always been here. We don't really think about them until, oh, I just need some strawberries, I'll run to get some. But this is actually a really big thing. Agrotourism is a big buzzword. These fit right into that. You know, people who didn't grow up in the south or didn't grow up around agriculture, I mean, it's like a shock to them. They don't know how these things grow. And it's not just necessarily the you-pick things, you know, berries, peaches and things like that. Rutland Farms also, some, they, usually they grow a specific patch of cotton, so people can see, you know, how it grows and how it's picked. Same thing for peanuts. It's just things that we take for granted because we've always been around it, but you would be shocked at the people that call us and say, is there somewhere that I can go pick some cotton to show, you know, my relatives? So it's definitely a draw. As far as our meeting facilities, we have three major conference centers, which is U G A, the U Museum of Agriculture, and the Tifton Area Conference Center. Five of our hotels have small meeting spaces, which is basically kind of just a boardroom, other than Hilton Garden Inn, obviously they have a larger meeting space. And then we have twenty, over twenty additional unique event spaces. And that's anything from an outdoor venue to things like the Peach Barn or Harding Stables, you know, some of your more rustic venues, as well as museums. So we definitely have plenty to offer people if they're looking for somewhere to have a meeting or host a special event. And then I just wanted to give you a quick look at our traffic, and I won't run over all those numbers. But you can see, especially on I-75, over a hundred and fifteen thousand people going north and south every day. And that's at the Highway eighty-two exit. And then those, you can see those numbers elsewhere. That's a lot of people coming through Tifton. And so we want to do everything we can to capture their attention, and if we don't catch them the first time, you know, pique their interest enough that they want to come back. Real quick, I just wanted to show you some of our economic impact numbers. You may have seen these already, they've been published a couple of times, but they're important numbers. These are from 2019, which are the latest numbers that we have available. Almost a hundred and ten million dollars in direct tourist spending in Tifton. I mean, that's, that's a big number. And you can see local tax revenue is over three million dollars that's generated just from tourists staying and spending their money in our county. Without that tax revenue generated, each household would have to pay over five hundred dollars more additional. And I think that's what always gets people's attention when you say, you would have to pay this much more if we didn't have all these people coming in, whether it's for sports or for meetings, or, you know, spend some time at the Georgia Museum of Agriculture, whatever it is. We want them here, and we want them here as long as we can keep them. So you can also see tourism is the third largest industry in the state, and that is behind agriculture and the trade industry. Go ahead. We are starting a new campaign in the tourism office. We're not getting rid of, think, Tifton, that's what everybody thinks when I first say that, but we're not. We're just going with the idea that Tifton has something for everyone. So whether you're here to, you're here for a meeting, for business, whether you're here just traveling through, or, you know, you've made this a destination and you're spending some time here, we've got something for everybody, from young to old. And you can see a few of our taglines there that we plan to use in the future. I mean, we will be using these across the board, print, social media. We're planning some new billboards to go outside of our region to really, you know, start to get people's attention. We'll be doing some new photography that will really catch people's eye. So we're really excited about this new campaign and kinda getting it running and getting some people here. So that's just a quick look at tourism in general, kinda where we're standing. Now, I just wanna move our focus a little bit to filming, which, you know, has become kind of the new big business for Tifton. The most recent film that wrapped up in March was called Gasoline Alley, and they spent a lot of time downtown. I think that's where most people saw them. You can see several of the various locations there that they filmed at, several locations on Commerce Way, as well as Main Street. They filmed out at the airport, Town Terrace, as well as multiple private homes. So they were definitely all around our city and our county, and that's exciting, that they saw enough here, you know, where they could do their whole movie right here in our community. So that was exciting. Go ahead to the next one. This is, this is where it really is interesting. They stayed in two of our hotels, Spring Hill Suites and Hilton Garden Inn. And across about three weeks that they were here, they had over twelve hundred room nights, which created an income of over one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And that is just on hotel rooms. So that's a big number, and that's especially a big number right now when our hotels have been struggling, you know, for the last year. So it's very exciting to get them in and know they were here for that length of time. But it didn't stop at the hotel rooms. You can see here, just a quick list of some other ways that they spent money in our community. They paid rent on the buildings that they used. They purchased props from our local businesses. They utilized a local caterer. They dined in our restaurants. They purchased fuel. They did some recreational activities. They played golf. They went bowling. You know, those are local places. They even spent some on medical. I don't think anybody got sick, but they did use the chiropractor, a local chiropractor here. So there's no way for us to even put a number on that right there. And that list is not exhaustive. I mean, there's probably other ways that they spent money that we don't even know about. And so there's just no way to put an accurate economic impact on that. Not to mention, you know, when the film comes back and people want to come and see where these things were filmed, that, that just, you know, is ongoing. The other film that we had here was at the end of 2019, was The Tiger Rising. They also filmed at the Town Terrace. That was where the majority of the movie was filmed. They also did a street scene in the bus. They stayed at three of our hotels and had almost seven hundred and fifty room nights across the three weeks that they were here, generating over fifty-two thousand dollars. Again, that's only in the hotel. That's only hotel income. Again, they also paid for building and property rent. They purchased props. They dined in our restaurants. Some of their favorites was Fresco Italiano in the pub. They spent a lot of time at those two places. They purchased fuel. They used some city services and utilities, as well as did some recreation of their own. One of the neat things about The Tiger Rising is all of their crew and their staff had two-dollar bills. That's what they were given to spend in our community. So that was a visible way for the community and for business owners to begin to see how this crew was spending money here. It's always nice to have a visible representation. And so, you know, again, there's no way for us to put a number on that. So we're really excited about that and the possibility of these films continuing to come back. I know the crew with Gasoline Alley has expressed interest in filming two or three more films here in Tifton, and Abby's been working with some, as well as some of our local hotel owners. So that's really exciting, and those numbers are very encouraging to the hospitality industry as a whole, just on the hotel side, as well as what it can continue to do going forward. Just a quick look at, you know, since now filming has become, go ahead, filming has become sort of a thing here. We began to think, where do we go from here? You know, the last few times, we've worked as a team, and I don't wanna say we scrambled to keep it together, but, you know, it was, because we don't have an official process in place, we had to kinda make it up as we go along. And everything worked well. They love Tifton, so, you know, we really wanna focus what now. First, I just wanted to point out that Tifton County is part of the Georgia Camera Ready Community. That is a state program under the Department of Economic Development. I am the current camera ready liaison, and that just, basically, the state has a database that they've established to give filmmakers and crews and location scouts a point of contact when they're looking in a community for a certain thing. We keep information on there. We can add pictures, you know, to various things where we know people may wanna film. And they send emails out occasionally to whenever there's a location scout looking for something very specific. Last week, I got one that they were looking for a four-lane highway that was preferably closed, that had an overpass. I mean, some of these are very, very specific, you know, that's not something we can fulfill, but you never know when it's gonna come across that it fits us perfectly. So it's nice to be a part of that community where, in the state office, they're looking out for us. They're trying to get films into all these communities, and then, you know, we're doing the same here. So one thing we want to do is establish some sort of a film team. I think that would be made up of various different offices and agencies, you know, tourism, city, possibly people from the county, just to have a team that's ready and in place whenever these crews come in. We're ready to meet any need that they may have. We need to go ahead and establish a film permitting process that lets us know everything that that crew is gonna need. Where do they wanna film, you know, what services are they gonna need, what roads are they gonna need closed? There's so many different things that come with that, so the more we can know upfront on a piece of paper, the better. We would like to establish a source guide and a dedicated website. I think first of all, that just shows that we're committed to this and we want people here. So when they see that, hey, they've, you know, they have this dedicated website, then they want us, they want us to come. And the pictures at the bottom is just an example of a source guide that we pulled, and I know it's kinda small, but it has everything from locations to props, to services, talent, rentals, you know, temporary help. It's all right there in one place, and that would definitely take some time to build, but that's, you know, it's on our list. And then we also want to go out and recruit and market Tifton as a destination for you to come film and recruit you to come here. Hopefully, you know, when trade shows start to open back up, that's something that our office can do, is to go out and recruit. And then I think all of that will just help us generate excitement here in the community. And when the community is excited about these films coming, then that makes our job easier, because then we know that they're not aggravated, you know, that a road may be closed, or, you know, they may be in the way. It makes it, it makes it worthwhile. And then I think the economic impact and return on that is, you just, you don't even know what it could do. So that's it. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Any questions, comments?
No, I think everything was great. I mean, I think you girls have done a great job tackling, you know, a movie, you come in Tifton and doing the things that you guys have done. And I also noticed the Instagram and the new social media things. I don't know who's running it behind the scenes, but very, very visible, popping up all the time. You're promoting all the different businesses that are here in Tifton through the social media. Obviously, this is the way, the new wave, where everything is and where everybody looks now, you know.
Yep.
They're looking on Instagram or social media before they look, you know, where else.
Anywhere else, yeah.
But kudos to you guys for, you know, pulling those stunts yourself, you know, to pull those things off.
Thank you.
Got Tifton looking good.
Thank you, Angela. That is exactly what we needed to hear, and I tell you, it's a great partnership. We are so proud to be a part of what's going on within the community from a tourism standpoint. You have our complete support, and we look forward to what the future holds, and know we're in good hands. So know that we are ready and willing partners, and we're gonna be talking about guidelines for filming later on our agenda. So we're right there with you to continue to work to attract these type of events to our towns. Okay, Donna, very, very much so. All right. Okay, let's move on. That was the fun stuff. Now, Pete, you and Ricky wanna talk to us about the inner landfill, new business?
Okay, we will. As Ricky makes his way up, if you remember, we talked about this last year, brought forward, but we're talking about the price per ton. We talked about moving the inner landfill out to the actual landfill itself, and then we talked about implementing a burner for the yard trash. So we, those are three things that we've talked about. Ricky and I have looked at this very closely, and while we're not ready to move the inner to the landfill because of some land issues. In other words, we're taking dirt off the land, so we just can't relocate anything yet. The burner, we're learning more about that. The E P D is telling us we can't burn green material, meaning if it's colored green, we can't put it in that burner. So that has stalled our desires to do that. However, what we wanna do is give you a snapshot of where we are for inert waste handling. And if you'll turn to the second page, where it starts with grinding services, Ricky's gonna take you through just kind of a scenario you put together. And I did not wanna wait till budget to do this, because we have some decisions to make, obviously, as we look forward, just on base sheer costs and what we're doing on a monthly basis. So Ricky, you wanna go through that?
If y'all have in your packet there the summary, most of this is done, as you can see, on a four-year average, just to get, you know, some good numbers on this. As you can see, average annual cost just for grinding services is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then on down the line there, you see what we charge for the raw material. The average is about a hundred and eighteen thousand income. And along with the sale of the mulch that we produce from the grinding, it shows about a seventy-three hundred dollar, excuse me, income. So as you see there, it's looking, you know, right as we stand, the average also fifty-four thousand dollars a year, trying to self-support the inner landfill. The tonages are broken down there just to show you that, you know, what the commercial line does, what the residential's. And what we're looking at right now is, you know, trying to say about increasing the pricing, commercial only. They are the ones bringing in the large raw material, which takes the time to grind. Our grinding services went up every year for the last thirty-four years, and the reason is for that. These tree services bring in these logs that the grinding goes through, the small stuff that our residents, you know, produce. Then they have to stop what they're doing, change gears, pull the big logs in, and it takes much more, longer to do that. And they charge by the hour. That's the only way they charge. So that's why you're seeing an increase every year. So what we're looking at doing is maybe, you know, just for commercials only, is going from an eighteen dollar a ton to twenty-five dollar a ton. That's in no way gonna take up all the slack, but it's a start. So that's what we, an overview, trying to just present to y'all what, where we're at right now, trying to become self-supported with our inner landfill.
Yeah, so just again, the twenty-five dollars going on commercial, we talked about this a little bit, but what we like to do is really limit bringing in stumps that are, you know, as big as this table. That we just cannot ground. It's costing so much money to do that. Large trees is, you know, larger than that pillar coming in, and we have to grind that. So we're not burying inert materials, so it's very important that we look at costs, especially on that grinding services. And while this won't flush out, if we could eliminate some of the big stumps and the stuff that we cannot handle, the grinding services, obviously, the result would go down. So we would pretty, come pretty close to averaging out a net zero on this. But this is, again, this is something that can't wait for budget. I just wanna bring it forward for possible action or consideration.
And what he's saying about the stumps, they cannot be ground. Nobody will grind them. And so they have to be buried, so we have very little airspace out there in this inner area to bury anything.
Wouldn't it be in our best interest to start basically sizing them up and not accepting stumps of X size or whatever?
I would encourage us to do that.
Either that or you apply a cost that's commensurate with what the cost is to do something with it. I mean, if they wanna bring it in, and it costs us what, X dollars, then you charge them that. If they don't wanna pay that, then they gotta take it somewhere else.
What is their option?
The only thing about that is there is no place for us to put these stumps. Now, grinding, yes, we can, you know, increase the price on that to whatever, you know, y'all agree on, but stumps cannot be done, you can't do anything but bury them. And they have to be buried monthly.
So what is the option for a commercial tree service outside of us?
Yeah, what we usually see is someone that owns a piece of land way out in the country. They dig a hole and burn it. That's the most popular, and there's no cost associated with it.
Is that legal to do?
There are services out there too that'll take your stumps. I mean, just, we don't have that, but, you know, like going to Waycross, for an example, big pulp industry there, they do have services to take the stumps.
That's probably what's happening to a lot of this material and...
Do we outsource our grinding service, or do we handle that?
No, it's outsourced. We had done numbers on that before. I mean, and at that time, it was still feasible to contract it out. As they increase, but still, you're gonna have an increase too because of the size of the material brought in. Those machines are high maintenance, terribly high maintenance. Because you get, you get metal in there.
Basically, my question is, are we better off than... We're better off.
We're better, we're better off contracting that, because you get metals, people mix stuff all in, the stuff we pick up. We found rebar out there that shut the machine down, you know, for days at the time.
Between that and people costs, I mean, with, it's not employed by the city?
Yeah, it would definitely take, you know, two more employees and more equipment, you know, and that equipment's about six hundred thousand dollars for just a grinder.
When's the, when's the last time we went up on this eighteen dollars a ton? How long has that been?
We went from fifteen to eighteen dollars, probably two years ago now.
Two or three is, we're close to.
That was recent. And really, we were doing good, but we have seen the influx of just grinding costs. And, you know, again, like Ricky said, we can't stash stuff out there. We don't bury it. So we have, we have increased our grinding tremendously, and again, people are gonna come where it's, you know, less expensive, and that's, this is one of the results, so...
Well, there's an awful lot of development and clearing and everything going on as well, which is a benefit. It's, that's what we want.
And all the storms have produced everybody taking the trees out of the yard. I mean, that's just...
That's a big one too.
Okay, so you're saying that if we, if we increase on this commercial rate to the twenty-five a ton, that will close that fifty-four thousand dollar loss gap that we've got right now?
Not closing. It starts working on it.
I'm speculating that it'll, it'll close it a little bit, because if we could eliminate the big stumps and the big trees, the grinding services, the costs will go down.
If we can do all of that at one time, yes, that'd be pretty close to closing that gap.
How do we, how do we get to where it closes? I mean, we've got, we've been fooling around here and in the red, in the red, and that's ridiculous. So what does it take to close it where?
I would, I'd just suggest the twenty-five dollars, which is not a big increase, but in commercial rate, I think that's very, very fair. And then that we eliminate the acceptance of stumps and large trees from commercial services.
Okay, what, when you say large trees, are we gonna just, you're just gonna point out the size we stop?
Well, you know, we do that with our pickup right now. We limit them to a six-inch tree. And, you know, that can be handled fairly easily. You know, when people say, and you're talking about trees this size, they set these to the side. First of all, they pull it out of the pile, set it to the side. They grind all the small stuff, then they come back in and start, they lower their speed of their machine, and then they start grinding this.
Yeah, there's not many people out there cutting down six-inch trees.
No.
I mean, that's, you know, you're talking about a twenty, thirty-year-old tree being the size of one of these, maybe a little...
We still wanna take care of our resident, and that's why I say, you know, you still want some coming in, you know, that, you know.
What's the difference in the charge of that six-inch tree that they grind, and then they go to a regular-sized, large pine tree? What's the cost differential to the person bringing it in?
Well, I don't know that I can tell you exactly. I would have to talk with the grinder, and, you know, I just know that, I know their process. It slows them down with these large logs. And then like I say, the stumps have no bearing at all on it, because we can't...
Are we pricing, are we pricing those correctly?
Say again.
Are we pricing those large trees correctly?
Not now or not. I mean, there's no difference.
Let me have to...
They're paying the same thing, they're paying the same thing you would if you brought your limbs out there, so...
Well, that's absurd. So I mean, that's, I mean, you got to apply the cost to where the cost is being...
And that, that's where we're after, right here. That's where we're after, is in the commercial side.
If you bring a tree like this, you're gonna pay more than somebody brings one like this.
But you can't really kinda relate it to a size. You gotta relate it to commercial.
I'm related to a size.
There's no way you can get up there and size that tree every time you come in. There's limbs on top of the, you know, there's no way to size it.
I guess for a landfill, what we're trying to say is it's really, it's not desirable to bring that stuff into this inert landfill. It's costing way too much time and way too much money. So if we could eliminate it, then that would be the best.
If we're gonna, what's the purpose of having the inert landfill, you know, for commercial purposes? Why don't we just allow it for residential use only?
Fine. I proposed it last time. I would completely concur.
The other side, but the downside.
Well, now what they're saying though is, we'll leave that, but if you want to bring your commercial stuff in, then you're gonna have to pay for it. That's all. And it gives the option. If someone, if I have a tree surgeon come and cut three trees out of my yard, and he wants to take it to our inert landfill, I mean, I'll ultimately pay for it, 'cause he's gonna pass that expense on to me, but that's what they're saying we would raise. But if I'm just going and I've got a few limbs I'm gonna fall down, and I can load those in the back of the truck and take them myself, then I'm gonna fall under the individual resident rate. But if, but if I'm just going and I've got a few limbs I, I'm gonna fall them down, and I can load those in the back of the truck and take them myself, then I'm gonna fall under the individual resident rate. So that's, that's the difference. You still have the option as a commercial vendor, and, and again, we're paying for that. I mean, you can hire the tree surgeon and, and they'll just pass that expense on to us, the resident. But it's, it's closing that gap on the, on the loss that we have.
We don't need, those that don't have trees don't need to be subsidizing those that do have trees. That's what's happening. If you, if you don't have any trees, you're paying for that person that's got ten and they just took them down. Well, that's the one off the paper. I'm sorry. And you got all them down, you pay for it.
And how do you, uh, classify somebody as commercial? You know, 'cause I mean, some of these guys, you know, I know some guys-
We, we, we know who they are, we know who are commercial. They may not have a name on the side of the truck, but we know they do business.
Okay, 'cause I was about to say, some of these guys got, uh, dump trucks and they, no name, no name-
And another way to, another way to eliminate that is you show me your, uh, driver's license, your residence.
Okay.
ID. Where is this coming from?
Okay.
You know, we, we know them. I mean, we already, there's several of them that do not have names on their vehicles, but we know that didn't come out of their yard.
Okay, uh, 'cause I was gonna say, I mean-
No, I don't think you're getting eliminated completely simply because, I mean, if you have a, let's just say you have a, a storm, hurricane, tornado, whatever, knocks down a bunch of trees, and then we're, can't bring your trees, you know, to us. That just causes a lot more problems for our folks, so I think the, the price needs to reflect what it actually costs, you know. You know, it is what it is exactly. A commercial, a commercial business owner's gonna pass that to its customers. So instead of costing six, seven hundred dollars to take down a tree, it may cost eight, eight-fifty going forward, just simply because of the cost of doing business, so.
And remember, if we do get into a situation where we've got a hurricane and, and we've got a lot of damage, that, that, then there's another layer that comes on that with FEMA and GMA and all our emergency services. So, um, so this is just-
They have insurance themselves.
Right, that's right. And so this is just the day-to-day, I'm taking trees out, what do I do with them?
Right, yeah. As, as FEMA's helped us in the past with that, we've, you know, allowed residents to bring it in if they had an ID to bring it in free at that time.
I mean, bottom line, that, that landfill has to be self-sustained. It has got, it has got to leave breaking.
Somebody's, you know, it's gonna be subsidized somewhere if we don't, I mean, it's-
That's right.
Well, if, if, if you're okay with it, we could try this. I, I, I bet you we, our numbers, we probably know in three months. In, um, in three months, if that does not work, uh, by the end of, you know, with our new budget, then we'll figure something else out. But we've gotta do something and-
Well, a lot of, a lot of, EPD has closed down a lot of places that used to be inert landfills. They've closed, you know, you could have an inert landfill at your property, but you can't anymore unless you follow the, you know, EPD regulations, so.
Are, is everybody okay? I know that we'll be voting on this tonight, but, but are we okay with this, pursuing this potential increase? And is there any other information that anybody needs before we get into our next meeting where we would be voting on this? So they're very good, just with this number or?
Yeah, I, I do wanna add, and just to be fair with, with the, the county, because obviously they're fifty-fifty partners with us. And I did talk to the county manager today that I'll be presenting this, um, tonight. So this, I'm gonna give this information to him tomorrow so he could pass it on to the commissioners. 'Cause it's important that we keep them updated why we're doing what we're doing. Uh, but I did, on a separate note, I did hear from him today in our meeting that, uh, I wanted you to be aware that tomorrow night at their meeting, they're gonna hear from the solid waste committee. Uh, the committee from the, the county will be presenting to the, the full board, um, options, uh, for their solid waste. Uh, and pickup collection, uh, they'll, he's telling me that it's gonna continue the same as they have been doing. Uh, but they're going to be looking at, uh, considering, um, possibly taking waste to another landfill or doing other different options, uh, as exploratory, uh, as of right now. So again, I told him, you know, we're partners in the landfill. We've been doing this for, um, you know, since two thousand. Uh, so there's a lot to, 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 you know, consider.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, he, uh, he's gonna talk through that. There are agreements, uh, but flow control, meaning that waste inside the county, uh, we've been doing that for years. And then post-closure costs, so there's a lot to it. Uh, and we talked through that, and, and Jim is gonna talk to the commissioners about that. But I wanted him to know that we're gonna be talking about this, and I asked him to do the same at whatever they decided. Make sure that all the details are presented to the commissioners so we're on, on the same footing when it comes to this.
All right, so what, I wanna make sure I understood you correctly. Okay, the city and county, I know this, are, are fifty-fifty partners in the ownership of the landfill.
That's correct.
City of Tipton owns fifty percent, Tipton County owns fifty percent.
That's right. And they, and this, this agreement, way back when, when the land was purchased and you start a landfill, you have to have garbage to go in it to pay for.
Right.
So, um, you know, here, you know, again, we're years and years later, uh, that if garbage doesn't continue to go in the landfill, then it obviously has a direct impact on costs associated to run that landfill. So we got, he understands that, and again, there's agreements in place, so the commissioners need to understand that too. So it's just not as easy as just going out and doing something, um, a little different.
So what, what they're contemplating then is going with a garbage, garbage service that would not use the landfill that they're fifty percent owner in?
That's, again, that's, again, that has, yes.
Even though we've got an interlocal agreement that says that they will send it there.
Again, there hasn't been any decisions. Again, we've just talked through this, but I wanted to make sure, because they're gonna be talking about it in that meeting, and I don't want any surprises if it lands. Uh, if Hayward is there or the, you know, press is there, that this has to be talked about. I mean, there's no questions asked. We can't put it in the corner and wait, and, and they have, they have to have all the facts. And that's why I'm telling you that this is really serious business.
It does, it does ring something true, but, but they can't up and-
It does ring the proverbial bell.
They can't up and, and decide next week they're gonna start hauling the trash somewhere else. I mean, they can, but they're gonna have trouble.
We are engaged with that. Rob and I have talked about it, you know, talked to, um, Jim in detail about that. I wanted to make sure that he knew we were talking about the inner. Again, it's, it's nothing that we need to hide, but from what I'm gathering, we just, we have a lot to talk about going forward.
Right.
Well, let me, this, the, the landfill and the cost per ton, you know, we, we increased that, we increased that not long ago.
We did.
We had an issue.
Two, two and a half years ago.
Okay. And is that one covering all of our cost as well?
Ricky, uh, I, yes, let's say, I would say yes.
And that's for some of your inert, you know, cost is being tunneled to, you know, from also.
Okay, 'cause I know we had issues about was the county gonna go along with it, that, which is ridiculous, and we don't even have to have that conversation. Because I, as, as Rob's second chair, I can read the agreement too, and it says you've gotta, you have to charge something amount to keep it, cover all the costs. So if the costs are X, then we're gonna start charging X without any-
That's right. You have to keep up with costs, and you're talking about millions of dollars to, for post-closure and, and millions of dollars each year for operating costs and so on and so forth. So Ricky, this year, we're starting to have, um, major wear on two big pieces of equipment, so, you know, we, we have to make new decisions. And, and really, if, if we continue on like we need to with the landfill, we, we, we're gonna draw pretty close to a million bucks just on equipment this year. So it is, it is huge that we're, we're on solid ground, um, that funding, uh, and, and what we've been doing, that we could count on that. We just can't make off, off the cuff decisions.
We have to look at this every year. We can't wait two or three years and, and then in five years, jump it up a big amount. That's something we should look at every year. If you have to go up a dollar or two dollars, if they're, to keep up with the cost, we've gotta do that.
Right.
And that's, that's across the board, whether it be landfill, whether it be water, whether it be sewer, any of these things. The costs are going up, and to wait five or six or seven years like we've done on some of them to raise the prices is crazy.
Right, but landfill is doing, is doing good, and, um, again, when, when we do budget, you'll see that. But we, I've got to look out tomorrow because from what I'm hearing, it's, um, it could get pretty interesting.
Pete, we heard, we heard conversations with, uh, the county manager, was, were they opened up to the idea of, of a transfer station? I mean, I know we kind of somewhat talked about that. I mean, would that be something that you think that they would wanna hear more about?
I think so. Um, and Jim and I have talked about that a number of times, and transfer stations is one option. So if it makes good sense, uh, and, and we could afford it, uh, and who knows? If we could do a transfer station and, and we could put our landfill just on hold for years and take our garbage somewhere else for a cheaper price. Uh, and if we both could benefit from it, then yes, he is willing to see the foot.
But that's something that needs to happen in a joint discussion, not a unilateral decision to do that and leave the other partner holding back.
Well, I was gonna, that's my next question. I mean, I, well, yeah, I mean, I, I see what you're saying. How, uh, I mean, you think they were like in the final stages, or you think they're preliminary stages of, of discussion about that, or?
Well, from our conversation, I, I, I don't think they're at final stage.
Right, okay.
I think it's, you know, the committee's gonna present it, and that's probably what I'm telling you, that you're gonna hear about it tomorrow. Uh, again, I don't know what detail they could call for the vote, for all I know.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, again, he asked for a lot of details, and he understands there's a lot behind the scenes that we have to do to make sure we're talking about the right numbers and the agreements, et cetera. So hopefully that doesn't happen.
Okay. All right, going back to the question, are y'all good with the, on the inert landfill, the twenty-five? As far as, is, if there's any other information that, does anyone need anything else from Ricky or from Pete to be prepared to vote on that when we come back for our next meeting?
I don't need anything on that, but I'd ask Ricky and Pete to, to be aware. We can't have fire department, you know, version two, like we had before. Because as you've seen, the county will pull out of an agreement just willing it. All of a sudden, we're done, we're going, we're gonna quit paying. So the history says that, that, the partners, they quit paying when they decide to pull out. So we need to be having in place, 'cause this committee's gonna do something. They'll vote to, to do it, and next thing you know, we're gonna be left holding the bag. So we've gotta, uh, quickly.
Yep. Our conversation was a good one, and again, I'm, I'm hoping, hoping that we can continue our talks.
And potentially, you know, just a suggestion, you know, we have a solid waste committee. Um, I don't know if y'all would want to reach out to the county commissioners to, to say, you know, it's just real, we, we, we need to work together on this since we are partners and co-owners of this landfill.
Well, I was gonna say, all the people say, is, Melissa, Melissa's only solid waste county's, uh, Greg, is it Greg Wood? Mr. Greg Wood, uh, and-
Webb.
Paul, Paul Webb. So if any of you have a relationship with any of the three, which I'm gonna always reach out to my representative of the county, 'cause Stan, uh, Stallmacher is my representative, so I will reach out to him and ask him his opinion of that. Uh, but if you have a relationship with any of the commissioners, I think it's time for us to-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Let's hear what they, if they're gonna present something tomorrow, let's hear what they're gonna present.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. That's what's key.
Well, just, just know we need to have those, we need to be having those conversations, so.
Come, come Wednesday, we might need to.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Ricky or for Pete on the inert landfill? All right, thank you, Ricky. I appreciate your work on that. All right, uh, we are now under our resolutions category for our agenda, and Adam Carr, if you want to come and talk to us about the sale of surplus property.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we have a lot of surplus equipment, um, small pieces and large pieces that we have, uh, set aside to ask for surplus. I put a quick little breakdown, 'cause there's a long list, but there's three hundred and sixty-two items. Um, twelve police units, two fire units, six units from the landfill. There's forty-two small equipment, um, that could be pumps or whacker packers or different types of, of small equipment. There's fourteen, uh, heavy, heavy equipment, which could be dump trucks, uh, sweeper truck, what have you, um, backhoes. And, um, there's nineteen other normal vehicle, um, service trucks, pickup trucks. And then there's two hundred and sixty-seven other small items, and that could be things like laptops, computers, servers, things like that. Um, but we're just asking for, um, these items to be surplused, and the sale is proposed to be, um, on June the fifth.
So you have to do a sale there at the complex?
Yes, we'll, we'll hold, hold it there, and they'll have an auctioneer that'll, that'll actually auction those items off.
Is that, is that all of it? Once, once all that gets sold, are we done for a while?
We're done for a while, yes, sir.
It's been two, uh, two, two years.
Right, it's been three, three years since the last-
I mean, if, if there's another hundred items, let's go ahead and get rid of it all at one time.
Right.
Can you see the extensive list there, uh, in our packet, so?
Yeah, I wanted to try to break it down, 'cause that list gets kind of, I mean, it's, it's a big list, so I tried to-
Who can hit on these? Is it only, anybody? Oh, okay.
Um, and as far as promotion for this surplus sale?
I believe the auctioneer is responsible for that.
Auctioneer does, does the majority of it. I'm sure we will have, um, online presence with the city's, um, Facebook or, or the website. But the auctioneer has, uh, he has a large, um, uh, following that he puts out lots of different types of ways.
And if you'd like to look at the fun channel and say that date one more time?
Yeah. June the fifth, June the fifth.
We really need a, we need a food truck or a hot dog vendor or something. We, we had some, we had, we had a lot of people out there.
We can do that now. So, yes.
Go ahead and set up, go ahead and set up a, a city, uh-
Just a city day.
Sell some, sell some, uh, potato chips and some hot dogs.
Bottle of water, two of them, fine, huh?
Friendly dog.
All right, any questions of Adam on the surplus property? All right, thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, the next item, Pete, it's just, uh, really some housekeeping, uh, on the voting delegates for the municipal gas authority of Georgia. You wanna talk about that?
It is. It's just the same as we have been for the last couple of years, and, um, they're ready. They being, um, municipal gas authority will have their meeting. It's gonna be virtually, and, uh, will have to vote, uh, members sexually coming up here next week.
Okay. All right.
Sold.
Thanks. Thanks, Wes.
That's what you get for being the mayor.
Ah, there you go. All right, uh, the next item, I had actually asked, um, Pete and Rob to provide for us. Um, we had the opportunity recently to participate with the Georgia Municipal Association on the newly-elected officials training. They came here and videoed that, uh, which will be shown in that training. We did a mock council meeting, uh, with the Georgia Municipal Association. And one of the, um, discussion items that came out of this mock council meeting was, um, within that meeting was the decorum of how a council meeting is run. And we do have, um, within our charter, we do have a resolution concerning our roles and responsibilities. But I thought that it would be beneficial to add just another layer. We are a city of ethics. We, we hold ourselves highly accountable in how we conduct and run our meetings, how we interact with each other, and how we interact with the public, and the public interacts with us. So I asked Rob and Pete to look at, um, creating, um, I guess, I, I hate to use the word stronger resolution, but something with a little more substantiative information, uh, concerning that decorum, and that's what's in your packet. Um, I talked to Rob after looking at this, and I, I feel like some of it may be a little bit more than I was really looking for or thought that the county, this particular council needed. But the other thing, uh, you know, we have, um, we are all subject to elections, so there's no guarantee, we, you know, we, that this council will always be together, obviously. That's the democratic process, and that's fine. But just to let other future councils know, uh, that we take this very seriously, and that we do want to make sure that we are professional and ethical, transparent, all of the things that we need to. So I've set the stage. Rob, if you wanna, you or Pete wanna sort of address the other items that are in that?
Just to clarify, number two, uh, the section number two is the GMA portion. And then section number three is actually what the current policy says. So this is, it's not new, but it's, it's all put together.
And one of the things that I did like about this mock council meeting, and MJ participated in that, Pete participated in that, um, was that, uh, the, the sort of rules of decorum were on the agenda. Now, what they did was they just had it on the back of the agenda at each meeting, so that way there was no confusion, that, that the public was noticed and the, uh, the council was reminded. So, uh, so just look through that and, and share your, your comments. Um, if you wanna, uh, email back and forth if there's something you're uncomfortable with, we can certainly address that. But again, it's just to, uh, not to chastise anybody or anything, but just to let the public know that we take this very seriously. We want to make sure that our meetings are run, uh, with the utmost professionalism. Yes, sir.
Mayor, one of the things that we talked about, um, you know, formerly, you know, a lot of councils, you know, will, you know, what, you know, the chair recognizes Commissioner Folk, or the chair recognizes Commissioner Hall. Uh, it's, it's, from my experience over the years, we've not had that issue about people talking over each other. And it seems like the, the manner of our discourse has always been civil, and, you know, someone who has the floor, you know, continues until someone else has the floor. So I think some of the GMA stuff had more the formality of the chair, you know, being recognized by the chair and then, then speaking. Uh, unless you all don't have a problem with the way you've been doing it, I don't know that it's kinda necessary to have that type of formality, you know, in our, in our- I don't know that it's kind of necessary to have that type of formality, you know, in our, in our council meetings.
I don't think it's necessary to have that level of formality.
That's, that's the one item that I was, you know, members will not speak until recognized by the mayor for signing off, right?
I don't think so.
We can do that, Mayor, but I don't know that we wanna.
We don't, we don't need to go to that level.
I never saw that as a problem, so that's not something that I would recommend that we institute. But, you know, the other issues about, you know, decorum and, and rules of conduct, both for members and for the public, you know, well, take another look at it, kind of tweak it a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, there's an issue with two of us. The mayor always has the option of waiting at the end, just walking in without putting it in.
No, no, we don't, I don't wanna go to that level personally of decorum. I think that's a bit much, but, but I think you all understand what we're trying to do. So read through that very thoroughly, and just, if you will, just send your, if you can text or email your recommendations to Rob and Pete, and then we'll, we'll look at it again at the next meeting and go from there. Okay? All right. Moving on, let's see, now we're into ordinances, and here we are. We talked earlier, we had this fabulous presentation about filming from Angela, and we really appreciate you and Victoria and Tyron being here tonight, so thank you again. And so I'll turn it over to Jessica and Rob to discuss our potential permitting for these events.
Mayor and Council, basically, we looked at numerous other ordinances of other cities in the state, and really, this is kind of a combination of Villarica as well as Lawrenceville. You know, I felt like those were really, you know, pretty succinct in what we wanna do. The, the main thing, and the overriding concerns on both the filming and on the special events, is really getting an application process and a permitting process, so, so staff, the police department, EMS, and fire department can all be on board and know what's going on. And that way, when somebody makes a, an application for a permit, either for filming or for a special event, we'll know exactly what, what we need to do from a city standpoint as far as street closures, security, you know, anything else that might affect our businesses. The other thing is that particularly on the, you know, the filming part of it, that, you know, there's a notice requirement to other, you know, businesses that are in the area as far as how it may affect them. And again, it, it kind of enables us to look at it from, from our services requirement, you know, is it going to disrupt pedestrian flow, is it going to interrupt traffic flow, vehicular flow? And, you know, if it's, if it would be closing I-75, we probably wouldn't permit that. But then again, if they wanna close, you know, Main Street for a day or two days, or certain hours, then we can look at that and plan for it. That is really the, the majority of it. I mean, you're looking at basically having an application, getting all the information that you need, making sure that it's going to comply with, with public safety, safety concerns, and, and that is really the gist of it. It provides for insurance, identification, you know, should, you know, to the city. So I, I thought that this was a pretty comprehensive, you know, like I said, I'm not taking pride in authorship, and I thought these were pretty good provisions out of Villarica and Lawrenceville.
All right, so everyone's had the chance to, to read through that. Read through it again. Have you, have we sent a copy to Angela? Have you seen this, Angela, what we're proposing? And Abby, have you seen that? Okay. Yes. Did you?
I apologize. This ordinance got off in the special, this is just, just for movie production, because we can't allow special brands to make them.
Now, you would be considered, you know, like media. I, I say that, I look to my city attorney for clarification. This would be.
And I'm sorry, Paul.
No, you're fine.
Attorney was a fourth.
Yeah, it's.
Hey, what, to answer your question, amateur photographers, you know, low impact, low impact film productions are exempted. So I don't think you're gonna fall into this category that would be applicable to this ordinance.
From, from what we've been told legally, anything on the streets that you do not have to buy a ticket for, and as long as you don't film the entire program, it's considered public domain. The other thing is if you're trying to pass an ordinance against news election in the street, I think you're gonna run into.
Yeah, this would not be that.
But I understand your concern, that you got people running around, you know, stopping traffic, racing down lanes, or, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah, this, this is more, okay, this is more of an effort to be as prepared as possible for visitors in the community as they're filming. So if they need to shut down Third Street, or if they need extra security from our police department, or whatever it may be. So just the day-to-day activity, if you're out filming the Rhythm and Ribs event, that's, that's separate, that's a different thing, so.
I get it. Not that we don't wanna make it happen, but.
Because we wanna make sure, not only do we want to make sure that our residents and businesses have what they need to be able to be a part of these events, we wanna make sure that the producers and the directors and all of those within the industry have everything that they need, so that we're as prepared as possible. So that way, if they need to film downtown, Abby knows, so she can alert the businesses. Or if it's out at the Agarama, if they're gonna shoot a western, you know, Angela's our film-ready person, you know, they can coordinate. So it's really just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, and, and that there's no surprises for either the city, our residents and businesses, or for those in the film industry, so.
I understand you have some control.
Yes, yeah, just something in place, so some guidelines. Okay?
Chief Hammond, Chief Hammond had a lot of comments in here, so he was involved just the same, because he gets pulled with a lot of questions.
Oh, yes.
He needs the directed department, so this was all inclusive with that just the same.
Um, we'll get you a copy, Angela, so y'all can just look through to see if there's anything, because I know y'all were on the front lines with these last two films that were here. If there was anything that maybe we need to lessen, or something we need to strengthen, or add, so I'd like your eyes on that as well. So we'll get you a copy of that, so you can review that and let us know what your thoughts are. All right, any other questions or comments on filming and those, in the movie and TV industry? Okay? All right, thank you. All right, Jessica and Rob proposed amendments to the alcohol ordinance.
Okay, Mayor and Council, Jessica and Abby and I have met on several occasions about the alcohol ordinance. Different type of facilities want to, you know, serve alcohol. And as a starting point, I just wanna talk, you know, what state law is. And state law says that a person under the, under 21 cannot go into a bar. And a bar is defined as an establishment that has 75% or more gross income from the sale of alcohol. Now, our definition is way different than that. It's, you know, the honky-tonk, I mean, it's very broad. So under state law, the only, the only prohibition of going into a premises that has an on-premise consumption license is that if you're under 21, you can't go in unless you're accompanied by your parent or your spouse who's over 21. So then, state law then leaves it to the local governments to decide, okay, what else do you all wanna do as far as alcohol and having people under 21 present? Right now, our ordinance says that if you're under 21, and they have an on-premise consumption license, you can't go in unless you're attending a, an event and you have paid an admission. But if it's a restaurant, which means they serve over 50%, 50% of the revenue is from food, then if you're under 21, you can go in. So the question really comes down to what does the city want to do as far as prohibiting people under 21 from going into a establishment that is not a bar under state law, and not a restaurant? So if you said, okay, we're gonna have our ordinance define a bar as a bar is defined under state law, that would mean 75% or greater, that's a bar, under 21, you can't go in unless you're accompanied by your parent or your spouse over 21. So then the question is, what other, if somebody wants to have an on-premise consumption license, then such as, you know, like a bowling alley, a billiard room, a gaming room, there's nothing under state law that would prohibit someone under 21 from going in there, and there's nothing under state law that would prohibit them from having an on-premise consumption license. Abby and Jessica and I met this afternoon, and just as a hypothetical, let's say you had a boutique that wanted to have an area where they served a glass of wine, and they want to have an on-premise consumption license. Well, we could do that, but no one under 21 could go in based upon on-premise law. So this all came up with the individual that wants to have the axe-throwing facility. And you get to the point where if someone wants to have an on-premise consumption license, and they're not a bar, then how do you wanna regulate those businesses?
Can you make it more extended by saying less than 50% of your sales, because if it's axe-throwing, you would think that more of their revenue is generated for, from the actual axe-throwing, you know, and then the alcohol would be, be less, I guess.
That's true. I mean, so there's a lot of things that you can consider, and really, you know, I've thought about this for months, about what's the best way to handle it. And, I mean, do you just kind of just list the things that you say, okay, you can sell alcohol at these type of locations, and list the bowling alley, the billiard room, ice skating rink, or they don't have ice skating up here, a roller skating rink? I mean, do you just list those out and say, okay, these folks, you know, these facilities, you can have an on-premise consumption license and serve, and people under 21 can come in? Or you say, okay, if you wanna have an on-premise consumption license, then you can have an on-premise consumption license, and people can come in. One of the things we talked about this afternoon is that, you know, you can have an on-premise consumption license, and say, but you only, you can only have it for beer and wine, restrict it kind of that way. Also, you can say, if you wanna have an on-premise, you know, consumption license, and you're not a bar, then, you know, you can have that, but, you know, you're gonna have a, a place segregated out from, you know, your regular business that either serves it there or serves it and then consumes it there. So I, I was trying to, you know, kind of take the 10,000-foot view and say, okay, what can you do under state law? And then underneath, what do you want to do locally? And it was like I was telling Abby and Jessica this afternoon, you know, if you kind of list these things out, bowling alleys and skating rinks, well, now you got axe-throwing. Well, two months from now, somebody else is gonna do something else. And all of a sudden, you're gonna have another category, and say, hey, listen, I wanna do that.
So I know, I know that axe-throwing and different things in other cities, and, I mean, in the state of Georgia. So I know they follow the state law, but then what do they do compared to, you know, when that came in, when that type of business came into their city? How did they adjust?
Well, that, my understanding, Jessica, but I think Valdosta, where this fellow also has one, I think they're wrestling with the same issues we're wrestling with right now. And kind of, kind of looking, so, okay, what, you know, what are we gonna do? So I've, again, it's, it's.
But, but what do we, I mean, we gotta first, let's, let's look at the problem we're trying to solve before we get a solution. Certainly, we don't want a problem, you know, a solution that serves a problem. And the problem is those under 21, we don't want them to drink, right? And that's all, that's what we care about.
Well, let me, but if you look at state law, and, and they say, okay, we don't want people in, we don't want people under 21 in bars, whereas really, that's it. But one other consideration, I mean, you go to Atlanta, and you go to Republic's or Kroger, they got a bar, you know, they're in the grocery store. So, I mean, the, the whole, it's just evolving.
The primary use, I mean, you know, I saw a bar, and your primary source of revenue is to sell alcohol. You know, at axe-throwing, your primary source of revenue should be the throwing of the axe, you know? So, I mean, I don't know, can we modify the application to say, all right, does, or do you serve food? All right, so that determines whether you're a bar or you're a restaurant. If you put no, then say, does your business generate more than 50% from alcohol? If they say no, then, you know, let it go.
And you come, and axe-throwing, which I don't understand why you'd ever mix axe-throwing with drinking. It's beyond me, but. So they, they can serve alcohol as axe-throwing business, but you can't serve it to those under 21. It's back to the same thing. An 18-year-old can go in a convenience store, but he can't buy the beer. But he can buy all these other things, but how do you keep him from buying beer? You ask for his, for a license, you know, and so you do the same thing with axe-throwing. Now, okay, two people are sitting at the table, one's 21, one's 18, can you stop them from doing it? Well, okay, not unless you catch them. But to me, if it's not a bar, give them a license, you gotta check the ID, let anybody come in that wants to come in.
And, and that is really why I wanna get to the starting point by talking about state law. Because if you follow state law, and then you, then you basically say, you know, anyone can have an on-premise consumption license, then you just, you know, that means people under 21 can go in, but certainly you can't serve anyone under 21. But the, you know, we've been talking about this for months, and so we thought that, you know, now that we've been through all, we've talked about, we've looked at other, you know, cities, I thought was, you know, time was kind of getting an idea, okay, what do you all want to do, or what do you think is important when it comes down to people under 21 going into a establishment that has an on-premise consumption license?
I have no problem with that, just like if they can go into any convenience store. I don't see a difference. You gotta check IDs, and if we catch you selling to somebody under 21, guess what? You're gonna be shut down for 60 days.
And if you think about it, you know, under 21 people go into restaurants. If you go into Ruby Tuesday's or any other of the steakhouses, they're, they're, they got a bar, they're serving alcohol, you know, people under 21 are there. So what, it just seems like to me, in reading the state law, and what they're trying to prevent, is, is people under 21 going into a bar and having, be in that environment. Otherwise, the state doesn't care. So the question is, what do you think is important, you know, locally? And certainly, I mean, I'm not trying to advocate any positions one way or the other, just trying to get a feel for what you think, what direction you wanna take this in.
Personally, I, I don't disagree at all with Jack. You know, there's, there's a responsibility for the business owner, regardless of what that business is, to check IDs and make sure that they're only serving to the appropriate customer. And if not, then we have a measure in place to address that. So, you know, I, I.
Simple to me, God, drive.
I, I'd be curious to hear the comments from the rest of the council. But I don't have a problem with that.
Yep, I mean, I think it's, I think it's on the, on the business owner. If they choose to sell alcohol or allow somebody under age to get alcohol.
Can you catch up with them?
It's kind of on them.
Yeah, that, that makes it, makes it a little easier for them to come in and get their license and to, to conduct their business, whether it's axe-throwing or whatever they're doing. And if we have an issue, we, we, we will deal with that, so. Abby, have you got any comments or thoughts as our Main Street Director? Because I know that this is a business looking to go downtown.
I think we're just trying to be, you know, on the front end of preparing for what other types of businesses may come. And do we classify them differently? Do we call them an amusement or recreation? You know, how, how do we, I think that we, now that we've gotten the temperature from you guys, you know, maybe we need to be in, we're trying to figure out how. um, you know, maybe again, we're trying to figure out how we allow this to happen. Um, Kayla Dixon, who is a senior axe-throwing practitioner, is not interested in serving liquor. He just would like to have a beer and wine, um, you know, and he actually has mentioned having a limit of two drinks. So he doesn't really want to be at a bar, you know, but then again, at the same time, he won't still allow patrons under the age of eight to come in, because you think about, you know, there are going to be a lot of individuals who are under the age of eight who would like to, to go and participate. So we're just trying to figure out how to make this happen, and again, think about planning for the future of what other types of businesses may be interested in having an on-premise alcohol license also.
Let's don't overthink this, though. I mean, this, this really isn't that complicated. It should be.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, okay, well, there we go. All right. All right, any other questions, comments concerning that?
Um, Rob didn't go over all the changes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shane, do you want to talk about them all, or do you think that we can move forward?
Well, listen to this, I mean, we have, we also talked about the wine tasting and, and the service of, you can sell packaged wine out of a wine tasting room. My understanding is that you, you know, a winery can have four locations in the state, uh, and that if they want to, they can serve, they can have wine tasting gratuitously, and then they can, they can sell their wine. One of the things that, uh, that I need to check on that we talked about this afternoon is can they actually dispense, uh, wine for a fee? And, uh, and I don't know if they can if, if they have an on-premise consumption license. You got something?
Okay.
Okay.
A citizenship.
I'll watch your top.
And approval.
Yeah, one last thing, and I'm going to let, uh, Jessica talk about the citizenship requirement. But I think Wes was, brought it up about, um, having a alcohol application license being approved by the city manager. And, you know, we have a, uh, a proposal for those type of investigations, the approval of the city manager for those applications, and then an appeal process should the city manager, uh, decline the, the license, then that appeal would come to y'all. So that's, that's the process that we're going to set up. But I understand that certainly sounds like a good idea to me, so we'll put that in place as well. And then Jessica, is there any requirement?
Yeah, currently, our current ordinance requires that the applicant or the owner be a U.S. citizen. Um, and so we're, you know, I propose to take that out, and it could be a U.S. citizen or a permanent resident. If they are a permanent resident, we already checked their, um, you know, verified status. Um, and it just makes, you know, if somebody checks, I'm not a U.S. citizen, I automatically have to tell them, you have to assign a manager. And to me, um, and you're talking about convenience stores, that's probably not a realistic manager. They're, you know, realistically. Um, and we've ran into that the past year of, you know, the manager on file, and that person's not there, it's somebody else, so, um, I think that just kind of creates somebody to mislead, um, in the application process. Um, and state law does not prohibit a permanent resident from receiving a license. Um, and then, uh, Senate Bill two thirty-six and Senate Bill two nineteen, um, have passed the legislature. As far as I know, they haven't been signed by the governor, but that's to allow mixed drinks to go. Um, for every entree that you get to go at a restaurant, um, state law's going to allow you to, um, get two mixed drinks to go per meal. Um, and if council wants to move forward with it, we don't have to do anything. It's kind of the same as we did the delivery of alcohol. Um, so we just wanted to get a feel, if y'all are good with that, you know, we'll let it, let it go. If not, we'll need to draft something locally if we're going to restrict that.
As Jessica said, there's nothing that you need to do unless you don't want to allow it. If you don't want to allow it, then we'll need to take some action not to allow it.
Doesn't bother me. Doesn't bother me, I'm good, so I, I say, let's move forward. Got it with that? All right, all right, any questions, comments? Anything else, Jessica, we covered everything there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we are through with that part of our agenda, now on to other business, city managers report.
Okay, I have a number of things. First, want to give you an update on the COVID situation. I did leave at your seat, DPH's latest weekly summary. Again, nothing, they're putting out as far as directives. The stats speak for themselves, obviously, everyone knows that vaccinations are available through many, many, um, venues. So if that's of interest to you, if you have not received it, and you certainly could do that, you could see the current totals via TIFT, our numbers are still, um, continuing to decline. Um, I looked over the executive order by the governor, and, um, he did, um, publish a recent one, March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. He renewed the public health state of emergency until April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So everything that, um, he has set forth is still in place. But a lot of talks about, um, reducing some of the, um, methods on, on what, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing it. Uh, and it was particular interest, interesting to read, uh, some of the, um, definitions, like live performance venue. And I know we've been getting a lot of calls, inquiries about the theater. We're doing a very, very controlled, um, audience there. So I don't see any, um, lifting of any directive more than what we need to do. However, uh, if it's okay, I think the fullwood parks, uh, that we open it because it is outdoor air, that we let, uh, that start be, you know, have functions there. People want to have functions with the caveat that, um, that public bathrooms, uh, we can't open those at this time. So we're moving in the right direction, but I wanted to give you a snapshot of, of where, you know, the state is, where DPH is, and it's, they're, they're not giving us a whole lot. So we have to still continue to use the common sense because things are still in place. So on April thirtieth, um, we'll, we'll look at that, if there's any changes. Ms. Fran reported this morning in our staff meeting that she's expected, she's getting word that the senior centers are doing a soft opening, so things are starting to move back for the seniors, which are great, and I think the vaccinations have helped a lot with that. Uh, but, uh, they're, they're telling her that the senior center hopefully are going to be in full swing by June, so that tells us an indication. So we, we should see some movement here towards, um, you know, the end of April with that. And I'm, I'm okay, I, I want to probably hold on to theater, uh, because of the inquiries, people want to put more people in there, I think we need to hold on that. If you're okay, I'm, I will open up the parks. I like to go ahead and open up Public Works compound, so we don't have to gate. That is something very easily do, but I think it would be time to do that. And then, um, lastly, we hold tight with, with masks unless you, you want to do otherwise.
So do we have any facility, any public facilities, city of Tifton facilities that are not open right now? Everything's open, right?
Everything's open.
Okay.
Yes. It's also interesting, I wanted to share, this is, you'll hear this kind of buzzword, but Abby shared this morning, there's a, a, a word or a phrase going around, it's called revenge travel. Revenge travel, meaning that people are ready to get out and start doing things. So again, we want to, we're on top of that, and, um, but again, we're just watching, we're watching the movement of the state very closely, and watching what other cities are doing and the counties. So, uh, this is the smartest way, in my opinion, to, to do it.
Just to add on to what you're saying, Pete, I had the, um, opportunity to call our public health department and schedule my COVID vaccine, and it was very, the, the lady that was on the phone was very friendly, very efficient, very quick. Uh, I go Friday for my first vaccine, and, um, so I would encourage you to, if you have not had the vaccine yet, call the Tifton Regional Hotline or our, uh, Health Department Hotline, and they can get you scheduled, very, very simple, so.
All right, everyone okay with that, with the park?
We're good on that. The park being outside, but we don't need to, you know, we don't need to open up too soon on these others. I think you're right about, you know, things like the, the theater and that kind of thing. And yes, people are getting the vaccine, but, you know, the CDC is still saying, Dr. Pajon, you know, continue wearing a mask, because they do not have the, the data yet to say, just because you have the vaccine doesn't mean you're not still, eventually give it to someone else. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel, let's, let's be smart. And we don't want to end up like the Northeast and the Midwest right now, which are cases are going up fast. They've got these variants, and to the mayor's point, the way to stop that variant is go ahead and get your vaccine quickly to, to help avoid that. But I, I'm seeing numerous people, they, they don't want to wear a mask. I mean, we've come too far to back up, you know, we just, we don't want to, you know, we can be open by the summer if everybody just kind of get your, get your vaccine and continue with the mask, okay?
If anything changes.
Yeah, I think the governor extended it to April the thirtieth, let's, let's, let's continue down the trail.
Okay, I'll keep you posted if we learn anything else. Okay, the next, uh, I wanted to review the updated budget and plan for the two thousand twenty CDBG Youth Center project, so I also laid this at your seat. Uh, I just, I wanted to thank the committee, uh, that was put together by the URA Board to address this. They, they had a couple of meetings, they met with the architect. And again, this project, um, with, with costs and how high everything is, it was a challenge, uh, to begin with. And, and we, you know, we, I think we both did not want a building that looked institutional. So it was quite a challenge, but they went to work. Uh, and now I have to give the green light to the architect, so we can get this thing in motion. I think the, you know, the bottom line is, I gave you two handouts with that. The first is a project budget. If you remember, it was a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that we received from, from the state. We committed, the city committed a hundred fifty thousand dollars along with some other in-kind, uh, fees. And then we partnered with the YMCA and Southern Regional Tech, uh, to do some of the, um, programming and some furniture. So all that said, uh, we were just at a million, million dollars. Uh, but under the city's funding sources, um, again, we have to come up with a hundred fifty-eight thousand for our, our portion, and that would be general fund money, splot, the seventy thousand, this would be for the drive and the parking area, which will be pavement and sidewalks, and then in-kind services, twenty-four thousand five thirty-three. So a total of two hundred fifty-three thousand, uh, nine hundred fourteen dollars is what our portion is. Uh, when we came out of the committee, I was looking at three hundred twenty-six thousand. So I did have a, I did have to whittle that away, and again, we, I broke down some concrete and, um, changed some things around with us doing it instead of the budget absorbing it. So I'm going to send this back to the committee, but I want, I mean, you're okay to go forward with this, because this, it needs to get underway, and the building needs to be planned.
Um, I got a question on that. On your second page, you're talking about, you know, storm drains and concrete, landscaping, that kind of thing. It's going to be in, in-kind work by Public Works, ESG. Is that different from the city funding sources of in-kind services, twenty-four thousand dollars? Is that in addition to that twenty-four?
No, it's not.
Because on the front page, in-kind services, twenty-four thousand.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the second page, you've, you've taken out money, but I'm assuming that because you took it out of the budget, in turn, it's going to be done by ESG and, and Public Works? So that's different, that's in addition to the twenty-four thousand dollars?
No.
It's just the in-kind portion. Jessica split it out, what was the percentage you did?
Yeah, I did, um, seventy percent material costs, thirty percent labor costs for ESG.
Okay, well...
Because we get the, I mean, we have the client, we can claim that on that grant portion as our commitment, and so we, we're just showing that in-kind.
So we went from what was forty-five thousand dollars in the regional budget. It's out of that, but it's going to be done by ESG, and instead of costing forty-five thousand, it's going to cost twenty-four. That's what it tells me, the way I read it.
I'd have to pull the other ones, I took it out, the portion that I used to calculate this and just show the end imbalance. Um, but we pulled these out of the construction budget, so they wouldn't be, the contractor would not bid those items. But we still had to account for them in the overall budget.
Okay, I got you, man, I, I, the seventy thousand ties, that concrete paving sidewalk, the seventy thousand nine hundred, that ties on the front page of splot, city funding sources. The other two were, were my turn, and you can look at it, see this, and let me know later, but it's, it was forty-five thousand originally, and now we're going to do it for twenty-four. And so that's, we need to look at that, at all play. And we can take it offline.
All right. Any other questions, or you want to get that from Jack to...
Yeah, I don't know what line he's walking at, but I think...
You get with me. How about that?
You know, when it boils down, the end of the day is, um, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be over a little bit. But I think the building, the product is going to be very, very, um, it's going to be a proud-looking building that we can call the Youth Center. Uh, then the next challenge is putting the committees on the programming and how we're going to function with, um, what we're going to do there, how we're going to do it, and how it's going to be paid for, so that's, that'll be the big challenge next.
Okay, all right, any other comments or questions concerning the Youth Center? Well, do we know when our groundbreaking is for IDP for the, um, the new apartments? And have we heard anything from our grant on our owner-occupied, potential owner-occupied homes? We heard anything about that?
We haven't heard anything on chip. Um, IDP is scheduled for June fifteenth, I said that at the management.
At ten o'clock, so I, IDP, that's the big housing complex, will have the groundbreaking on June fifteenth at ten. Again, we'll, we'll send a lot out, and what I'd like to do is coordinate very, um, probably simultaneously groundbreaking for the, on these, these buildings.
That'd be wonderful, yeah, because that's going to be a lot of, a lot of good stuff happening right there altogether, so that's exciting. Okay, all right, any other comments or questions concerning the Youth Center? All right, uh, that really wraps everything up. We do have mayor and council comments, and then we will need to go into the executive session for legal and personnel reasons, so we'll wrap up with comments. Does anyone want to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I don't have any comments.
Wow, okay then, there we go.
I've said all I needed to say.
You said all you needed to say, well, good, then that means it's been a good meeting for Jack.
Yeah.
MJ?
Uh, nothing, nothing.
You good?
Back, back in, I hope everybody had a great evening.
Yep, absolutely. Wesley?
Well, um, after a lot of discussion with my family and a lot of pray, I made the announcement last Friday that I am not going to seek reelection, uh, for District One City Council seat. Uh, it's been eight years, just finished up eight years this year. Um, and my kids are starting to get, uh, into sports, and that's one of the main things that, uh, you know, to me personally, sports, uh, and, and just, uh, lessons in life, they go together so much, and I want to be able to, to help mold them, uh, through that process and be a part of their, um, you know, sports, coaching them and whatnot, so, uh, you know, God, family, then work is, is the, is, 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 is the order that, that I live by, and, and so, and, you know, uh, again, my family comes first. And with that, um, I want to go ahead and announce now, so that anybody that's interested in District One, that, that could start coming to, uh, the city council meetings and getting familiar with the terminology and the issues that we are going through. Uh, so when they, you know, hit the ground running on day one, that, that learning curve is diminished, because there is a learning curve when you get into this seat. A lot of acronyms and, um, that are used in government, and, uh, you know, the more prepared you are for, uh, this seat, the more effective leader you will be. And so, um, now that's why we decided to go ahead and make that decision today. But I, I, I trust the city council with my entire life. I mean, you guys, there, people don't understand how much time and energy we, we give to this job. Um, and, uh, you know, it's not easy, it's, it's not easy. And so, um, you know, be prepared, uh, to not always, uh, you know, to have to think outside of the box. And, uh, you know, be prepared, is, is pretty much all I could recommend to whoever decides to run for, for government office. But, uh, we didn't make that decision last Friday, and, uh, you know, I appreciate all the... I appreciate all the support that not only you guys have given me, but, uh, District One has given me as well, so.
Mayor, I don't think that's acceptable, and I don't accept that.
I don't accept it either.
I think we should vote.
No, you can't do that. No, we, we, listen, Wes, we, um, we just, we just appreciate you so much and the work that you've done. And, and, um, you'll never make a wrong choice as long as, as things are in the order that you put them with God, family, and, and work. And, um, we appreciate Erica sharing you with us, and, and Penley and Keegan sharing you with us, and Colony Bank sharing you with us. And, um, I know that there's, there aren't many people in this community who love this town more than you do. And, um, and, and the work that you've done here with the council and for Tifton and the work you'll continue to do. Because you still have several months that you're going to be with us. Uh, the work that you're continuing to do is just so very much appreciated. And, um, and so, uh, you know, my, I just, I, I just, um, I just think the world of you. And I'm, and it's been an honor for me to serve in this capacity with you as the vice mayor. You and I talk a lot, and we'll continue to talk a lot.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's, it's just, um, I'm, I'm just very proud of you, and very proud of your family and, and the man that you are. Um, and I just, I'm not going to say more because I'd get emotional, so there you go.
Who am I going to ride the GMA meeting with?
Not yet, not yet.
There's still work, there's still work I've got to do with you, and I'm going to get you straight.
I don't know, you know, I don't know.
Johnny?
Well, Wes, it's been a, 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 a pleasure to be, to know you and to work with you. And let me say that we're going to miss the shit out of you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, then. There's that decorum I was talking about. Yeah, anyway, all right, I'm going to get you a t-shirt that says that. On that note, I will need a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel issues. All right, we have a motion, there's a second, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. All right, we are adjourned, we'll take about a, a two second break, and then we'll go into executive session.